We're having problems with our big TV tonight, so I see you guys on my screen but not on the big TV. So we won't be able to see if you're doing something or showing something.
To the pledge of allegiance. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We call meeting order, roll call.
Mayor Westergaard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Holtman.
Yep.
Grease.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Mahler.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go over the budget.
So let's, if everybody has their packet, we're just gonna walk through through the pages of this packet and answer questions. There are several issues that we need to discuss that are mentioned in the memo, but let's kind of walk through this information here first. On page three, on those informational charts, and it really is just informational, about the property rollback figures, you see that residential rollback this year is fifty-six point four percent. That's up from fifty-five point oh percent last year. So there is one point four percent then additional value on residential right away. And you can see what all of the other rollback percentages are. Multi-residential continues to go down, and that shows in the next graph down there, that it continues to go down, three point seven five percent each year until it's equal to residential, and that'll occur in two more years, twenty twenty-four. Okay, DOT road use tax per capita estimates. Couple of years ago, we had reestimated up a little bit after that gas tax increase from a couple of years ago, to reestimate to one twenty-six, and we budgeted this year at one seventeen. And reestimated that at a hundred and seventeen dollars. The DOT is estimating that this year's road use tax receipts would be down about eight percent. That's related to COVID, and just people aren't driving as much, not as much gas tax. Estimate for next year, for FY twenty-two, is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's a couple bucks lower than what we would have anticipated it to be. So hopefully that'll be a conservative estimate. You see the bottom of the page there, the IPR's contribution rates. Contribution rates for all regular class members are the same this year. And then for our police department protection class, that's actually, the employer share has gone down three tenths of a percent. Flip to page four, we've seen this one before, just evaluations in SAC County and the large increase in valuations that the city had this year. And that's due largely to Avaco rolling off of TIF and going on to the general fund valuations then.
Do we know what they pay for your property tax? Is that hard to find?
No, it's online.
It's online.
Anybody can figure that out, yeah. It's, I hate to guess, whether it's above or below a hundred thousand. Page five, though, is, I think this one's kind of interesting. This shows our taxable value by class of property. And you can see that we're just very, very heavy residential. So out of our total eighty-eight million dollars, seventy-four million dollars of that taxable value comes from residential value. Six million from commercial, six million from industrial. That multi-residential one, one point three million, but that'll continue to go down. Like you said, the rollback on multi-residential is gonna go down here the next couple of years again. So that'll go down a little bit. So as we can continue to see more growth in our residential values, you know, we see new construction, and then we also see good sales prices that you would anticipate residential values to continue to grow. See what our TIF is there, one point four million? And then there are some taxable gas and electric utilities, industrial stuff coming through town. They pay taxes on a different type of scenario than straight property taxes. Bottom lines better show taxable ag land and then the taxable ag buildings that are in the city. And there's not too much value there, not a whole lot of ag lands. Page six shows that property tax analysis, and we've seen this before too. With that assumption at the top, assumes the general fund tax dollars increase by two percent. And we discussed this at the last meeting, and actually had motion then on, or to set the public hearing based upon that, that it'd be two percent. So you see the top box shows where we're at right now, and you look at that total tax levy of eight forty-five. Total tax levy proposed then for next year, seven dollars ninety-four, about seven ninety-five. And that still generates, you compare the general fund tax dollars for this year, six hundred seven thousand, and would generate six hundred twenty-two thousand then for next year. Page seven is the public notice that will appear in the paper, and that'll appear in the paper on Wednesday. Tell us about the public hearing then that takes place on the fifteenth of February, noting that general fund tax dollars next year are six hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, and that that is a two percent increase in total dollars. Because they focus everything on the total dollars of the general fund. Now, it shows also the tax rates, and that's the bottom part of the graph, where it says the maximum tax rate this year is seven dollars forty-eight cents, okay? Next year would be seven dollars and three cents. This thing can be very confusing to people when they look at this and they say, the tax rate's seven dollars and three cents, when we really know that our tax rate's seven dollars and ninety-five cents, because this only shows general fund stuff, doesn't show Beth Service or other collections. So it's just a little inconsistency there, it just doesn't cover everything. But that's what our, this relates to general fund then only. I did have an explanation for increases, my explanation, there are set aside funds for future street projects that we had going to be doing that. Page eight, and this is just information for you about tax abatement projects. The top of the page, what you see is projects that were basically constructed during two thousand nineteen. So this is their value then on January first of two thousand twenty. So the tax abatement forum then starts in September twenty-one. So it's during this upcoming budget year that that tax abatement would start. But see, during that two thousand nineteen year, about one point five million dollars was created. You can compare that from year to year, that was a pretty good year. If you look at the bottom of the page, where it's saying that over those five years, you generate five point five million dollars worth of valuation. And then the right-hand column shows the city taxes that are abated. And in total, there's twelve thousand five hundred and five dollars worth of city taxes that would be abated then for this upcoming year. Hey, page nine, we get into a little bit on wages. And let's look at those notes at the top of the page first. So wages for all full-time, non-covered employees are assumed to increase three percent. And the wages for the full-time union employees are per the collective bargaining agreement, which is three percent. Part-time pleasers assume to increase three percent. All returning summer wages are increased twenty-five cents for last year. So if you look down and you say, it shows people returning to their positions, that's one of the ways to be, to have a conservative budget, really. Because that's the most that the wage would be is if the person returned. Otherwise, the way, if we'd hire a new person there in place, the wage is actually lower. So not that we hadn't made any decisions on rehiring folks, but this is a conservative way to budget, that's to have the funds available for it. One thing that I highlighted at the top is that I would propose to increase the wages for campground attendants, mini golf, and parks maintenance from nine dollars to ten dollars. So that would be the lowest hourly wage that we have. I'm interested in your thoughts on that, about whether we could increase from nine dollars to ten dollars.
It won't be long, it'll be fifteen dollars. We won't be able to hire half of them then.
How does that compare to the utility workers?
Oh.
The summer utility workers?
Yeah, the summer, the utility floaters, their base pay is eleven dollars then. And if we have one return this year, that would be eleven twenty-five.
What? Go ahead.
I don't know, you don't, I mean, I just don't understand why they're not paid the same, I guess.
I guess I would always looked at job responsibilities of the utility floater and the more intense manual labor that goes along with that. As far as the labor and then the equipment operations, we're looking at justifying that pay. Plus, the practical side of it is that we'd had difficulty filling that utility floater position, and we still do at eleven dollars an hour, we still have some trouble with that.
We have some trouble filling the parts, too.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
That way going from nine to ten would help.
I know, but for ten bucks, can't you work at McDonald's or somewhere?
Oh, I think it's, if they have to drive there.
They said Walmart now is starting at fourteen.
Really?
Without the fifteen dollars they're worried about, you know? And so is, I think.
We have a hard time, sorry.
So is McDonald's, I think they're way up there too. Well, they can't get help, so they gotta pay more.
Sure, yeah.
When's the last time we've raised our camping fees?
When we raised our camping fees, mm-hmm.
About in nine.
Oh.
So it's time to give.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, if we're gonna give these guys all, and I'm not against it, but, you know, we gotta cut our expenses too a little bit, but, and you're looking at about seven years now, twelve, just around.
Yeah, it's.
So I, you know, I'd like to see what, you know, and I'm not a camper, again, Dave, I always relate to, you know what camping sites are, what they get for them and stuff? Are we too high, too low, are we in the middle?
Oh, we're right in the ballpark right now. You know, especially for full hookups.
We had, had.
Where, if you're in the ballpark, does that mean we can go up a little bit?
It's, you know, I guess the answer can be yes, and part of the reason why would be this, that we've been having this discussion about campground Wi-Fi. And what we're finding out is that our costs are gonna increase significantly, at least as far as month-to-month costs on the subscription. Because right now, I think we purchased a fifty, fifty meg plan, and I'm having Corn Belt quote us two hundred or three hundred. And you just know that the costs are gonna go up. So we did meet with Corn Belt, and they have a proposal in place for hardware, and they need to price that out, and then also to get us this numbers on two hundred or three hundred. But as we're talking about that and talking through alternatives on that, and we had talked through this notion of, well, could we provide a basic level of service for free and then ratchet it up to a paid service if somebody wanted a higher level of service? Okay, so technically, it could be done. But the more we talk about that, and the more, you know, you're really, Corn Belt's really relying on their ability to provide an excellent service then that way, which really couldn't necessarily say that they would be interested in doing that and offering that service, not knowing what the enhanced revenues might be. And then having an expectation you're gonna provide a really, really high-quality service all the time, which can still be hit or miss, you know, when you're dealing with wireless down there through the trees and everything.
We're at twenty-three dollars a night for full hookup.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
But you gotta keep in mind, if you're gonna raise rates, that has to be a year in advance, because we take, I mean, if we were gonna raise rates, we couldn't for twenty-two, we're too close. I mean, we could, but it'd be a little hectic right now to get it done.
For twenty-two or twenty-one?
For twenty-two.
Twenty-two. What we would really need to know for sure and have in place is, if we were gonna raise rates for twenty-two, we need to have that finalized before, basically before the first of April or so.
The first of April of next year?
This year, this year.
Of this year, twenty-one. Because we always take reservations more than a year out.
So if you go up by a dollar, is that where we normally go, or two bucks?
We did, I think we.
I think it was two dollars last time, but.
We did, we did two dollars on the fifty amps, is what we did. And a dollar on the others, I think. Maybe it was two dollars overall.
You can't determine what the raises rate yet right now until you find out what the, what Corn Belt's gonna cost. Maybe two dollars won't be enough, I'm just.
It's, so it'll cover that. I don't have the actual number, but it's not gonna be that high.
Well, camping is perceived to go up in the next year. So I just think that the fees need to be raised, and I think the employees need to be paid more. You know, if you're trying to get employees and you can't get them, I mean, it's usually because you're not paying them much. And ten dollars an hour doesn't sound like very much to me. And, but I do think they need to work, they need to not be sitting down there twiddling their thumbs, they need to be working. And I'm not saying they haven't been, I'm just saying that, you know?
We had a deal up at school, they need to hire a new janitor, custodian, and they was offering instead of ten or whatever, they was gonna offer him twelve bucks an hour just to get somebody interested in this. And the guy, there's a couple of them, and he said, well, why would I come for twelve bucks an hour when I'm ready getting eighteen? I mean, and that's at IB.
Really?
Yeah. So I think you're, I think the wages are a little out of the ballpark, you know, especially for part-time help, that's only three months out of the year.
Why couldn't we go ahead and give them, give them the ten dollars an hour and then decide on the Wi-Fi and the raising the rates at a later date, just to be able to get help, try to get help?
Because I think.
I just think they ought to be getting eleven. I think if the utility workers are getting eleven, the campground ought to be getting eleven. Or maybe the utility workers need to be twelve, I don't know. But I do think ten dollars an hour isn't very much, but I guess I'll defer to the rest of the council.
Yeah, I guess it would seem to me that if you want, if you would entertain eleven dollars for our campground and parks people, that we'd look at twelve dollars for utility floaters. And Bill's going, more than that, please.
I've had guys that quit for the jobs for fifteen bucks an hour for summer help.
That's the truth.
Yeah, I think we're way out of the ballpark, is what I think.
I do, too.
In order to raise rates, we gotta do it with a motion or resolution by what date?
For sure by April.
April.
Because April first, they start calling and booking for the following year. So when you advertise for fifteen, yeah. I mean, the only thing that worked this year, which will be a huge headache, not only because she's teaching me what the heck's going on, you know, it's like, okay, that one got in for that, but then it would just have to be like, I don't even know how you could.
You can't beat a big ass.
You just post that new rates will be effective.
Right, starting next year. Because this year, look at how much of it's already booked. Kay even said, every day she's got credit cards coming through the spots, like, it's gonna be another stellar camping year.
Right.
Right.
That being said, now's the time to raise the rates for the employees if we have to.
Absolutely, and you know, and again, you're gonna have another stellar year, so you're gonna be able to cover the wage rate. It's gonna be like, I think it's gonna be full. I've been dinking around a little bit, acting like I was gonna make a reservation, there's a lot of full stuff.
Well, but like Vicky said, you know, if you got.
You can't find places to camp.
Make sure they're doing something, you know, keep them busy.
No, here, for, guys, just dink around, dink around, so you don't have to.
I think they are, whenever I've been down there, they're always busy.
What is the, what happens with the, are we gonna rent out at all the spots you guys are working on?
I guess, don't, don't anticipate, don't plan on that, you know, the.
Is that like one nineteen through one thirty-five or something, is that those along there?
Sixteen sites.
Sixteen sites, but ninety-three to one nineteen was, was that area. So that's why it's all blocked off.
We talked July first, Scott, but who knows when these guys are gonna get done?
Say, that's just, the completion date on the project is July first. And, you know, we just, we won't have people go in there and camp until there's a good stand of grass, and it's, you know, you don't wanna do any more damage by opening it up early, so.
Who's the guys?
Ten-point construction.
Ten-point construction, and there aren't any in another project?
They started it this fall.
Okay, oh, so you're just waiting on them to, and have to talk to them at all?
They do good work, I think.
They claim they'll be here first thing in the spring, but I've heard that before.
I think that's where Scott uses his diesel diplomacy on them.
Will, yeah.
They have always done a good job for us, though.
Yeah.
It'll be a nice project, it'll be well done. But, you know, they'll look at the completion date and say, I gotta have it done by that time. And they wanna get us done early, you know, they really do, they wanna get us out of the way. It's a relatively small project. If I'd look at campground and parks at eleven dollars, would you look at utility folks at thirteen dollars?
You're gonna raise the.
Utility.
Be the minimum, the minimum wage then for these folks. Eleven dollars for campgrounds and parks, and then I'd pitch thirteen dollars for utility floaters.
How many of them do you get?
All in camp. Two in one.
Two in one.
Yeah, we did three last year.
But that's how we get our stewards all get it in the spring. It's a, that's a six-week project. That's why Carter didn't come back.
Right.
Because it didn't get enough money.
Well, he was running the crew.
Yeah.
And running that jetter is not fun.
No.
You find a few rewards, but.
Boy, I bet you do.
None you wanna keep.
But, um.
It's not a fun job.
Look at that picture, eleven and thirteen, our next. So then I'd say, what do you think, Whitey?
I'd be fine. Like I said, though, we got, it's important to get that raise up for camping though, for next year.
Raise the rate.
Yes, so if anybody asks, it's real simple, we're putting in, you know, Wi-Fi and.
Well, the new.
We made new improvements on that.
And taking a couple of spots.
Yeah, new sewers and stuff, dump station too, right?
Yes.
And that was always one complaint I heard, was the dump station, how bad that was. So, I mean, we could have a litany of things that we, the improvements, and I'm not so sure we shouldn't even start that now, about all the improvements that we have going on down there, that we are got these other fifteen, sixteen. If you can eliminate the surprise, that way it's.
And that's easy to do, I mean, advertise it.
Yeah.
Put a sign up there by the new site.
Put a sign up down there, and then I would like to also see, like, I wanna promote Lakeview through the campground, get that calendar down there, what all's going on in Lakeview. On the flip side, it could be all about the campground. This is our project, this is what we're working on, and we've gotten done the last year or two years, and should be done by this year. Let the people know.
Yeah, but I don't think you'll lose every people over two bucks.
You're not gonna lose a camper with two bucks.
No, so I mean, in that.
I can't think of.
So I mean, that's, I think. If we get, if this helps getting help, let's get effort, but.
Look at the price of camp, how much a camper's worth of help?
Can you, can you give us a projection of what a two-dollar increase looks like?
Yes, I will have that stuff for next council meeting, we'll go through the rates.
If the people weren't happy, they wouldn't be coming.
That's right.
And they're finding more stuff to do, splash party, playground equipment, you know, they can sit in a big chair.
Yeah, we sit in a big chair.
Sit in a big chair.
Sit in the big chair, make me wanna drag the lake view. I need a big chair.
All right. Very good, I thank you. We flip to page eleven. This is police department stuff, and let's just hold off on that a little bit and see if Brandon comes back. Just attending to some phone issues. Page twelve just talks about our city insurance, that's the same. Nothing has changed from last week when we reviewed that information. So you look at the bottom, the box at the bottom, about how we budgeted this then. This budget will show a hundred and ten thousand dollars coming out of the general fund, a hundred and eight thousand dollars coming out of the electric fund. And those two funds would pay for our entire insurance load for the entire city. Page thirteen goes through debts, again, that's the same thing that we went through at council meeting last week. Nothing has changed on that, other than all of those numbers are incorporated into our big budget. And then page fourteen, it is, the only thing to note here is that you're looking at these transfers where it says we have eight hundred and two thousand dollars in transfers. In a lot of ways, it looks like you counted that money twice, because we're transferring money before it's ever spent. So I'm gonna show you a budget at six million dollars, but of that six million dollars, eight hundred thousand is transfers. Makes sense? Okay, few things then, on page fifteen. So anything that's included here on year one of the capital improvements plan is included in the draft of the budget. A few things, third line down, the economic development fund, that would have twenty-five thousand dollars that's coming from hotel motel. That has been utilized to fund our grant projects for downtown. And we've given out several of those grants, and then also, we funded the golf course out of that then last year also. And we'll have that discussion here. Front, that front desk software and receipt printer, I do wanna budget that in there. We have not yet amongst, from Kay and I, would not come up with a recommendation to pull the trigger on that thing yet, but I think we, there's a lot of benefits that can, that can come from that as far as good flow within Kay's office, about, largely about how you manage receipts. Storm sewer and tile mapping, I'm getting another proposal, and I've talked with DJR, and expect that I'll see some numbers from them here quickly. Okay, community center, this shows an expense in there for the community center for about half the project, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, it just shows seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses, but it only shows seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars then in other funds coming in. It shows two hundred thousand dollars worth of private fundraising, and then five hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grants. And then the timing on this would be that if they, if the committee can stay with their proposed timeline, they're looking at construction then be next spring, so it's spring of twenty-two. So that's why about half the project would be budgeted for this current year, half then for the following year. So again, still a lot of it's. So again, still a lot of it's contingent upon, uh, uh, successful fundraising and grant seeking, so.
How are they, where are they at with the two hundred and fifty thousand private donations?
Seventy-five thousand so far. We haven't sent out any, all we've done is target individuals that said they were interested in it, that's what we've done so far. And we start sending out for grants.
Underground to the fish barrier project, that's, that's in this, uh, budget too. Those, uh, bid documents have been sent out to let bids on the eleventh of February.
Well, we, we don't put no more money in the fish barrier, I thought you were.
Just, no, not the fish barrier, you know, our, our money that we're putting in, it's, it's three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
From the sponsored projects. Uh, and that's anticipated that we would pay that yet this current budget. So it's not, not, you don't see it for next years. The, the items there in the, in the parks, um, general fund, we'll, we'll go through this on the general, on the general capital fund. Um, if we were to follow through and, and fund everything that's here, that thing's running in the hole. So we wanna, uh, the one thing that I would, would point out to you is a, is an estimated cost there on the replacing the Kubota mower and broom. And staff would certainly like to replace that, but as I'm talking with, with Eric about that, that would be the lowest priority about immediate replacement. They just don't utilize that for very much right now and there's opportunities to use that third mower a lot more within what they do. Uh, the eight, eight picnic tables for the shelter house are, are those nicer, uh, plastic coated ones? And then sixteen new picnic tables for the new concrete pad sites. Rock for the lakefront lots, we were down there and, and got things measured up on, on the amount of white rock that it would need to, put a nice, uh, camping pad at each one of those lakefront lots. And, uh, that number's right there in, in the ballpark on, at the seventy-five hundred dollars. And then I wanna have a little discussion here about the shoreline riprap if we. And I gave you a picture, if you flip clear to the back of the, of the packet, it's actually page fifty-two. We had, had discussed this at the last meeting or two and, um, we got staff together with some Ruth and Sandy and Eric, me and the mayor. We're down there looking at these, these areas as, uh, the areas that needing, uh, to have potential riprap. So the area over there by the mini golf, it's a much smaller area, we're just looking at about thirty-five feet of native stone riprap. And then the bulk of it is about a hundred sixty feet of native stone riprap, uh, by the lakefront camping spaces. Okay? And I know we have some input maybe on the, on the riprap by the camping spaces. Sandy's had heard some comments, I'm sure.
Yeah, um, I'm all for the native stone riprap down by the, um, golf course, but the drawback I'm hearing is we're, it's not gonna be a good quality of service if we put in rock down by the lakefront. Like, it provides a great service, not because boaters can sit there, they can use it kind of as a beach area. It's where they were putting in, like, people that brought their own kayaks and stuff. Um, I don't know, I really am not too excited about going in the first year with the controversy as big as I think this will get.
A lot of the camper.
So I would ask if we, I, I mean, if it's, I don't wanna lose nothing with the DNR. Um, I would just ask that we table it for one year and let, let's really monitor that place, that section, and just see what is going on there and how much it's used, 'cause I don't know. How much? I mean, I've heard ten boats, I've heard fifteen boats, I don't know how many boats, um, like along the lakefront where that. Where the golf course, you know, but.
No. They couldn't, they couldn't get that many in there.
Yeah, I don't.
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That is, that is so far out right now, it's so shallow, that if a boat is there, it's just a small boat and it's tied way out there.
Yeah, 'cause it can't get in.
Yeah, there, there are, there are boats docked out there. Very seldom, very seldom. Over here, by the golf course, that is the busy part, for boats to dock.
And we're gonna lose all that space there too, to boats, if we put the riprap in?
No, most of it stays open. That's why it's only thirty-five feet over there, it actually, uh.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna put rock on top of rock.
It, it, it supplements a lot of that, that was.
Yeah, because we, we've gotta keep that for boats to come in.
Yeah.
'Cause a lot of them, a lot of them come in and just come up and get stuff from the concession stand and use the bathroom and then go back out. But they park there for a little bit, otherwise people, cameras park there overnight, um, some locals park there for weeks.
Okay.
Charge them.
I guess just my, my little personal update on that is that we talked about, about the project and about getting a DNR permit, I've applied for a DNR permit, for this, for the picture, the thirty-five feet and the hundred and sixty feet. The other thing that as I'm talking with the DNR, especially, uh, local DNR about this, they says, check with, uh, soil and water conservation, they might be able to fund some of that. So, I, I have been checking with them and, uh, don't have any answer back from them yet on that, but they might be able to fund that. And, but my third point is that I don't have a contractor yet for this year, we haven't explored that, you know, as far as contractor goes. So if this is something that you wanna sit tight for a little while, we, we don't have any, uh, irons in the fire with the contractor right now.
Like when they, like when they're gonna dredge that, will they pull some mud, mud or silt along that shore out of there?
I would guess not.
Oh.
That, that won't be a high priority area.
East basin, we've talked about.
Yeah, I know, usually it is that part over there, but.
They never talked about going in the bay yet.
They won't dredge that much.
Makes more sense to do that.
So, so am I clear that, that Ruth and, and I know Sandy doesn't know yet, but Ruth's feeling is, is that we can wait a year on that hundred and sixty feet? Or what is your feeling, Ruth?
Uh, down there, uh, to the east?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't like that much, yeah.
Well, I don't know, uh, I don't, I don't know why it can't be done now. Seriously.
Is that the area though, that, if my understanding, that's the area that's gonna empty the boats or not?
No.
No.
Well, I guess, it's, that's the, that's the concern, is, is that, you know, it, it's a, it's a beach area now. You, you can beach your boat. Now, it's so shallow in that area and people know that it's so shallow, it's not often done. Um, and, so as I was talking with, with, uh, Ruth and Eric about that this morning, it was a lot more that, you know, people may beach their boats there, but if they actually kind of beach them out still in the water, you gotta get out of your boat in the water. Um, that the water's that shallow there and, and you would actually then anchor it while you're still in the water. I don't know, it just, it just seems like we.
So, so where else, where else then are they gonna pull up to be able to go up to the concession stand?
Right there by the golf course.
Yeah, you see that part where it says the thirty-five feet of native stone? There's still.
Right, I see it.
There's still most of that area available for where you beach your boats.
Okay, okay, all right, I see it.
That's where you see them beached all the time.
Yeah.
How many feet is that there?
I don't know.
Where the beach?
Thirty-five.
Say, we only proposed to, again, supplement some of the stuff, some of it's there already. That we would supplement some of that rock and then add just a little bit to it, to extend it out. Um, say I've applied for the DNR permit, but we're just kinda in a holding pattern on, on funding too, and. Yeah, I get, I guess, I'd look at this to say that if it doesn't happen until next year, that's not the end of the world either.
I wanna kick an idea out there, if, I'm just talking about over by the golf. What happens if we put, if we did, do that, especially thirty-five feet? Would, and we lose a little bit of boat parking, could we make the roped in area a little smaller? So that she could.
Yeah. Yes.
I mean, that would per se, you know, if we lose some, we can pick some up that way too, so.
Yeah, yeah, the other thing that's changing down there, and we'll talk about this here in a bit too, about, to the west of the swimming area, we had put out, it, it's a two-section floating dock where we rent kayaks and stuff from. Okay, so we don't propose to do that now, that we would not put this, this dock out at all. So there's that additional space where this dock was then too, it's pretty close to the, to the swim area, but there's a, a space or two extra for, for boat parking there too.
Has there been rent kayaks further yet to the west?
Yeah, so, the city, you know, we just don't propose that we would rent kayaks and we'd have a, uh, our, our private business person do that.
Right.
I, I'd just like to.
Good idea.
Slow down on the riprap a little bit, you know, especially, we don't even have costs or anything like that, let's, get the permit, how long is the permit good for?
I'm not sure, but, uh,
Are you talking about stop the whole project or just this area down there? I mean, we're still gonna do all this rock and stuff around the mini golf, right?
Yes, right, right.
Yeah, so we're only talking the hundred and sixty feet down here.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we need to fix the golf course for sure.
'Cause we didn't, I didn't list this there, 'cause it's not part of our DNR permit, but what we're gonna do is, we got this thirty-five feet of riprap there, but then there's also just a bunch of, it's two inch, uh, river rock that fills the entire area from the shoreline, between the shoreline and the, and the mini golf. And it is, it does wash away a little bit, we're just gonna supplement that on the top and bring the rock back up to where it had been.
And then the mulched areas.
And then on the, on the mini golf course itself, we're replacing, all, taking out all of the existing mulched area and putting river rock in there instead, so. Okay. Hey, while we're discussing a little bit of stuff related to the beach area and then that dock, if you flip to the back page, this whole, talk a little bit more about Blackhawk Recreation Rentals. Um, and that, that shows, uh, a couple things on there. If you see the red, the red picture, or excuse me, it's just a red rectangle, that shows an area that's twenty feet by forty feet. Okay, within Sandy's lease agreement, a twenty-four foot trailer. It says that she would bring in, and that the, the lease area is roughly this twenty by forty feet foot area. Okay? Doesn't necessarily have to be right there where that rectangle is, it's just a representation of how big the area is. So a couple things, and Sandy can talk about a, a proposal on a building, but the other thing that I was gonna take a look at was, can we relocate that floating dock? Front that we're no longer putting in at the, at camp present, and we relocate down, that down to where it says possible dock site there on the X. And, uh, some issues with that. So the city has a code that states that only city-owned docks are permitted for, to come off of city-owned lands in the town bay. So we have that existing code. So if this was something where the city wanted to put in this floating dock there, it would be a city dock, it would, uh, it would be a public access dock. Now, uh, with that though, if we'd look at, at usual, you know, one of the main users of that public access dock though would be the rental business.
So we have that offer for you. What, so with it being a public dock, it's where we would like to have a sign put up that this is a public dock, you know, we're talking with the DNR and with Scott and stuff, the only place for me to launch all this stuff that we're going to rent is that big dock, where it's super busy and I'm very concerned about safety with kayakers and kids and people hanging around there when there's trailers and boats trying to pull in there. Or, um, and I don't want to use so much the other dock, the nice dock that you guys put in that they pull up and they use the restroom and, or let people off and on, that newer part. Um, because again, it's big boats pull up there. If we had this two dock section, advertise it as, it's a city public dock. Um, Josh and I, what we would do is purchase what's called a kayak launcher, I don't know if Scott gave you a picture of that? Um, that's a, uh, wa, you buy that, like, we don't build it, it's a, something we order. And we would pay for that as a donation to the city to use as a public kayak paddleboard launcher. It's a safety thing, they literally don't even get into the water, um, it, the kayak pulls up in between those handle thing. Yeah, hold on to the handle, get in, sit down, push yourself through it, it kinda slides you right out the other end. And the same thing when you get off.
Best thing I've ever heard of.
Oh, yeah, Vicky's much, she's a kayaker, so.
Well, it's that getting out is the hard part, so if you've got something hanging on to, that would help.
You're gonna pull in and it's gonna stabilize the kayak, they reach up, grab the handle, it's stable. They, instead of it being wiggly and wobbly, and they can crawl right out. So if the dock were there.
So you would let, your proposal is to let anyone use that?
It's not our, mine, it's yours, yes, it's a public kayak paddleboard whatever. Am I gonna use it? Yep.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
I don't care if it's a camper or somebody from out of town brings their kayaks down, use it.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think that's a great addition, 'cause a lot of people are kayaking.
Yeah, and I don't, we're not asking to put our name on this dock or nothing, it's your guys' city-owned, we'll, just, we'll give you guys a kayak launcher. It's just, like I said, it's supposed to where I'm gonna be doing all this with that.
It's insured to benefit, yeah, I've got a few more points.
Just that, so, so far, what, what we've done is looked at the feasibility about using the stock, it's technically, it would be feasible. The only difference between really that and, and the beach area is that the riprap area is a lot, a lot wider, but, and I talked with Eric about how we access over the riprap and it, and it's, uh, certainly feasible, we can make that happen. So I talked with the local DNR about moving this dock down by the rental business and they thought this was okay, but I need to talk with the DNR from Spirit Lake and I've got a call into that person, but still haven't heard. And then also need to confirm with the, with the city attorney and, and with the DNR that it's okay to attach this kayak launcher to the, to the dock. And, uh, and any, any insurance concerns about us owning this kayak dock, uh, launcher also by the dock. 'Cause, and how that interacts with, with Sandy's insurance, 'cause she's gotta be insured and has the city listed as an additional insured on the, on the policy. So we will, just wanna work the interaction on that. And again, just that kayak, kayak launcher would be public access also, so.
I think it's a great idea, make it work. I have some concerns, and I know you said that building isn't necessarily gonna be where it's at, because it's right in front of the dock, the way you have it drawn on here, right? I would assume it's not gonna be there.
That's where that grain is.
Hey, no school tomorrow.
No, it's just, it says.
Didn't it say that?
It says ESAC County will have no before school activities.
Oh, gosh, yeah, somebody that's still gonna do something.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Vicky.
That's always a prerequisite.
That, uh, I just showed that being, what, what I did is penciled that in just right, uh, adjacent to the existing DNR pump house.
Yeah, right in that exact spot is a shady spot, 'cause that's where it floods, 'cause that's right where the dip is.
That's where the dip is, where the water drains out.
Right, so that's not gonna be where it's gonna be.
No.
So, can I address the building part a little bit? So when, uh, we started this project last year, it was literally, I'd gone on Facebook and like, hey, what could we do to give something to the community, what kind of business would you like to see? And this was like a popular one. Like, all right, we're gonna throw this together, we're still doing it this summer, 'cause COVID did hit and we knew outside was gonna be big. We ran and bought a trailer. The trailer, I don't know if you have a picture of my trailer, there's a gray trailer I sent a picture of, that's the trailer. We are gonna take that trailer, go fill it up with all this stuff and start this business that I had a permit with you guys. We couldn't buy the stuff, 'cause of COVID. We came home with an empty trailer. So now, as it's, we've gone through this and I've got mentors and people I'm talking to and, um, a business plan put together, we have to have a lot of stuff to rent, um, in order to make the project work. I mean, if you only go in with a couple bikes, a couple kayaks, a couple paddleboards, after you got your six or ten units out, that's not gonna be enough to fund all this. So we have a lot of stuff to rent out. Um, so now it comes down to operating it out of a trailer, 'cause you just have to have an office space. Cause you just have to have an office space and a place to put the stuff, um we're outgrowing our general idea of what we wanted to do. So we are open to suggestions, this is just something that came up today, what if we tried this, it would be a building on skids. We would propose a little fenced in area, um because like right now, I'm already busting out of my seams in a rental shed, putting all our stuff in. Um and then it's, then we're gonna have to run back and forth to the shed to get the stuff, so we're just, we are open to ideas, what would you guys like to see down there, how can we make this work? Um, we even looked at like, we drove up and down Main Street, well, maybe we'll just rent a building, there's nothing really to rent. As far as a place to put a business, this is ideal, it's super ideal to be down there by the lake. It's just, what what do you guys propose we can use for options? Does the building?
Well, I like the idea of a temporary building on skids, I like that idea, because I would not want that trailer parked down by the water all summer. If you parked it back in the parking lot or somewhere, somewhere in the grassy area, somewhere where it's kind of off of that lakefront.
Blend in with the rest of the trailers.
You could have the trailer there for, you know, additional.
Right.
Items, but I wouldn't like to see the trailer down there, so for me, I would think the building would be a a good idea.
We feel that, we feel that.
Is it gonna be?
Well, I mean, it's, what, we're open to that too.
Scott's got penciled in?
Oh, no, no.
No, that's the, that's the permitted lo- land that we, our space, I mean, it's gonna have to stay within. Um eight feet wide, it's just how long would it be, because then we do pick it up and we take it out, it can only be as wide as a trailer. Otherwise, we have to get permits and all kinds of stuff to haul this thing in and out of there.
Okay.
So whether it's eight by ten, eight by twelve in there, um. The boys are gonna easily be able to move it, it's gonna end up going to the hanky farm in the winter. Is where it would go.
I'd rather see a building with a trailer down there all summer.
Well, and again, it comes down to, I want it to look good, when we bring the trailer down on the weekend, you're not gonna see it. Because it's gonna blend in with all the other hundred boat trailers and pickups and stuff that are already parked down there. Um during the week, we feel, um, so we wanna also do like a delivery service, so if you live anywhere in Lakeview, especially the folks that live around the lake. Um if they want to rent a kayak or if they want to rent our float mats and stuff, we are gonna be set up that we can bring it right to their house. And do it as a delivery, um so that means that person might have to leave for ten minutes or fifteen, whatever. So if we had the fence part by the um the building, then we could lock that. And the bikes, if we had the bike rack on one side, the other side of the building, the bikes can be tied, can be locked to the bike rack. It's just a thought.
Well, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a learning curve, I'm sure, this year, but yeah, I'm on paper of a building, I would. And I don't mind the trailer being down there as long as it's not out by the lakefront, so.
It looks like it's gotta be eight by whatever you have to have.
Yeah, but and we don't, we do, we gotta be able to move the thing, we don't wanna get permits and take down power lines and all that, it has to be able to get. They'll take two forklifts, they'll pick it up, put it on a trailer, um I'm gonna guess it's gonna be um Chuy Moore's equipment. Helping us, and then the other thing, also I feel this idea is too, um on that building. If we ever got approved, the first place we're going to, and we've already talked to Eric McCullough, is to go to the school. Provide all the um product to build the building and then um Josh and I are gonna make a donation for the labor to the school. And I want it to look like the light jacket house or the new cabins, I want it to all blend in.
Right, good idea.
I don't want it to look, I want it to look nice.
You don't wanna write red, huh?
Nope. No, no, I'm already gonna, I'm gonna have a big blow up squiggly guy dancing in the sky, so you know we're open.
There you go.
Yeah, and then I mean, we'll have signage, I would love to get a thing that has all the stuff listed that we got and. Our number's gonna be on the building and, and we'll have signage and we'll have it on the trailer too, um but I'm getting such good feedback, I. They're like, be prepared to be busy.
I.
That's good.
I I will, I I will relay some of these, some of the concerns, just I I want you to at least be aware of them.
Right.
Just know that there'll there'll be possible public concern about placing another structure down there on the lakeshore.
Yeah.
You know, I I would expect that that we would hear that, and that if it's a trailer and it's portable, you know, that's one thing, if it's a. If it's more of a public building, expect that you'll hear some concerns about that.
We'll put wheels on it.
And then there's um just all, also concern about perception about allowing pri- a private structure on public land. Just, again, there's a a a difference in the way you might view a trailer versus a building. Just understand that uh I would expect we would hear these concerns raised.
I've got one concern, I've wound up concerned for me, but like you are in charge of the campground, how much time do you plan on spending? While this is open in the summer?
Um, yeah, we're all, we're trying to work all that out, I mean, it's gonna be hired help in there. Yeah.
I mean.
Though my only rough time of the part is, and I talked to Vicky and I know Scott knows this, is from the time, our first day that we open until school gets out. That's gonna be our rough time, is having enough staffing, because it's, some of it's gonna be kids, you know?
But, yeah.
You know, looking at sixteen year olds or older.
About that, how much time do you?
Trust me, we can talk till we're blue in our face like.
I mean, how much time do you have?
We know it's gonna happen once in a while, it's part of it, but it's a service that we've been living for.
Didn't we discuss, Scott, that with the computer system, you know, if if she had to be gone for more than a couple minutes, she can log out, I mean.
Yeah, the the way our time uh time card system works, you can you can clock it in and out, it's gonna be an extended.
If she has to run the campground, she can, you know, she's only one person.
But we know this is the first year happening, so there's gonna be stuff happening, I just don't can't look ahead.
Couple, just a couple other things that that I would uh ask you to think about, if if this were uh were anybody else and it's private citizen. We would require a building permit for for this shed, um which would be a unique arrangement about putting a building, a. This building on public land, and then also, you know, we would amend that lease agreement to show this. You know, it it mentioned the trailer right now and we need to have it, you know, properly amended to to show that this would be a builder.
I think as long as it's a temporary structure and it's not permanent, that's when they get upset, when you block the Lakeview, is when it's permanent. And they're a little more fussy about over by the piers, um. I think you don't know unless you try something, and this particular agreement business is something that's enhancing. Our lake and our campground rental, it 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 directly affects the lake, the income that we get. I believe off of off of our campground, so I guess I think it's not like someone just showing up and wanting to. Sell jewelry down there, so.
This is an all summer deal, this isn't just a one time weekend deal, this is, I think this is gonna be good for this, the campground and the lake.
And trust me, you guys, I mean, I totally wasn't gonna apply for the campground part at first, cause I, this is my concern. And there's gonna be people watching me like a hawk, and the minute I cross the line. And get, I mean, so try, do know, but also do know, I made it very clear, I'm also starting a business too when this all went down. But I will always be fair, I would never, you're, you'll get your money's worth out of me, I promise.
I'm not worried.
I know, but I mean, there's gonna be, people are gonna say something.
So, uh, yeah, anything else directly relating to Sandy or any any business stuff, otherwise we're back to.
Police.
Page fifteen on that capital improvements plan. Where we finish up the parks, we look at police, just a couple things there for police about purchasing. And outfitting a patrol vehicle and then purchasing a new computer, what do you, what do you got on patrol vehicle there, chief?
As in make model?
Just where you're at on any disc, on any, any of your ideas.
So I got a um. Guy coming in uh from Cross River Lake, uh he's gonna give me an estimate, he's gotta stop in Storm Lake for something else, come. He's gonna come swing down here, take a look at our vehicles, see what we can transfer out of our vehicles into the new uh a new vehicle. Um looking at a silver router right now, um but won't know anything definite until he actually comes here and. Both times he's tried to come here, we've had snowstorms, so it's uh, as soon as he gets here, we'll be, we'll be discussing that. And after I get his offer, then I will see if anybody can match it, uh especially around local.
Aren't vehicles hard to get now, they said, they just told me that Domino's only got a few vehicles up there.
I'm sorry?
Domino's is having a hard time stocking any new pickups on it.
Yeah, I mean, they're, so they, I think they have three, three uh vehicles left. Um from the the twenty twenty models, and then of course, we wouldn't get it till July. So, you know, it's, as soon as he comes down here, gives me a price, gotta make sure I'm within budget, um. Wouldn't wanna be able to reuse a lot of the stuff that's in the vehicle right now, um make sure a lot of the similar stuff would fit. Um and kind of get a an estimate on how much um the the total cost would be for a an outfit of the entire vehicle.
Alright, good.
Let's uh, we'll stay with the police department here just real quick, if you flip back to page eleven, and flip to page eleven there, chief.
Yep.
This sheet is is the sheet that we give Wall Lake to define all all of the costs. Of operating that police department, and then ultimately you work your way through a calculation and get down to the bottom. It comes up to uh what our cost per man hour is and then we apply that to the monthly fee. This does show that uh the cost for for Wall Lake is proposed to about about three thousand dollars. Next year versus uh versus this current year, and a lot of that's driven by staffing, but. Comments, chief?
No, um, you know, I I've said this before, I'm looking at March to get you some type of document. Show the first quarter um of what are, what we're doing with our agreement with Wall Lake, uh whether we're abiding by it. Whether we're not abiding, abiding by it or where we're at with ours, I can tell you right now, just by looking at the month of January. We are well within our range of abiding by the um uh abiding by the contract. Um, I wanna get a a full quarters length of time to uh to grasp it all, and then I will have something made up for you guys. To show the time that we spent there.
Right, during the summer when that probably increased.
During the summer probably increased, I meant so, yes, I mean, it's, um, yes, I mean, obviously, I'm, it's a quarter. But it's the most down quarter of the entire year.
Sure.
So, um, when we get those numbers, at least it'll give us an idea of of what we're looking at and if. Uh if we're going down there too often, too little, too whatever, uh especially going into the summertime.
How's everything functioning with your staff then, chief?
All well.
Yep.
No COVID, everybody's.
Good.
Everybody's working, um, you know, it's Colin goes to the academy in March. Um and we are staffed and I think we're gonna have, be perfectly fine for a while, he is. Um at the academy, and when he gets back, it'll just, it's, it'll be good, it'll be a nice full oil machine.
What, uh how long is the academy, is that six weeks?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks.
So the one in Urbano, I think is like fourteen, fifteen weeks, uh the one in Des Moines, uh but the short one is eight weeks. And so we will be having him ready and running before the summer begins.
That's the, it's a good time if that works out.
Yeah, March fifteenth is true, like, May fifteenth is what we're looking at.
Good.
Let's flip back to page fifteen and we'll walk through the rest of of these items that are that are included. Um so for sanitary sewer uh that we would fund, the the wastewater treatment plant demolition, set aside fund. And this proposes twenty thousand dollars, um with half of it coming from sewer fund and half from sales tax. You'll see that uh that ten thousand dollars from the from the sewer fund is also about the amount of money that that fund's running in the hole. Then for this, for this upcoming year, so we'll, we'll have a little discussion of that when we look at the, at the revenues versus expenses. Cause that one does run a little bit in the hole. Uh Public Works Capital Fund, we're, we're doing pretty good on on getting uh, keeping that fund adequately. Adequately stocked, the uh county road lift station actually just, just got a quote on that today. Um and you went ahead and and uh got that all signed up, Bill.
Set up, yep.
Thirty-seven five then for that uh. For that lift station upgrade there on County Road. Purchase the the sewer camera, okay, the street construction, set aside, um hundred thousand at least. This would propose fifty thousand from the general fund, and then we always take the remainder of the of road use tax that's not spent on other things. And then put that in the street construction fund.
So I have a question, I don't know if this is the place for it, but you know, since we had the complaint on the three streets. And I didn't bring, um, I wasn't, haven't gone back and looked at the old records, but so. What is Bill's input on what we can do with those streets and what would it cost us to do the asphalt and is that completely out of? Line or what, what can we do to help this situation?
It basically doubles your cost, Vicky. From a seal coat to a two inch lift. And the reason we do what we do, is we only have so much money, and the seal coating is just preserving the street. It's filling, basically filling the cracks. So we have a budget of just how much we can spend and we try to do the most we can with what we have.
I, yeah, I get that, but um.
But if you don't wanna do any seal coating, then you're gonna, those other streets just double that cost.
But this seal coat wasn't very good compared to other seal coats we've had in the past.
Out around the, I talked about around the lake there, but it still looks good.
The liquid cutoff.
Well, like Horseshoe Drive, they ran skid holders all across it, and that was the worst thing they could have done. And that hurt that street.
But we can't go back and fix this, we'd have to re-start all over again, right, you can't, you can't fix this.
You can always put another seal coat on it.
Put another seal coat on it, if there's only, so far, we only had one person complain, haven't we?
And we took the whole crew down there, swept the lawns, swept the street. But you have your, you have your primary roads, which we do all the two inch lifts on, and this, which we call the others, where we did the seal coating. Or secondary road, where you don't have a lot of traffic. But if you're looking at doing all the blacktop and just have the cost from last year and just, whatever the seal coating was, double that price. Basically, what you're doing with seal coating is filling the cracks.
Right.
But again, this this seal coating was not very good stuff, Bill, and that's, that loose gravel, that loose stuff did, never did pack in like it should have.
I think he put so much rock on it, what he did. I don't know.
Well, we won't be, really be able to assess it until after winter anyway.
Um, Dave, I could have, when Bob always comes around once a year, I, we can go back and look at the job.
Yeah, I know.
See what he says.
If there's anything, any fix to it.
I know that road though, that, it's out there like we're driving, that's one of the better, that's smoother roads.
I didn't, I don't know about you, Scott, but I didn't hear a single complaint from the people out there.
No, it didn't, it worked out nice.
I mean, I drive that road two, three times a day.
And that's a lot of traffic on that.
Yeah.
But you could, and maybe that's why it's better, cause there was a lot of traffic, but you could, you can, you could tell it right away on these streets, you know? There was a lot of rock on it, because on your bike, it was just like riding through new gravel or something, I mean, it, and it hasn't ever packed down. It's just, it's still loose.
But it could have been worse, we could have had it engineered.
Yeah.
Cost twice as much fuel than it really is.
I think, Bill, if you could meet with them, that'd be great.
I will, I'll, I'll talk, I get along. I will, I'll talk, I get along with Bob real well.
Okay.
And we only get one bid, so we haven't got much, nobody else bids it?
No.
Well, it isn't like you can say you're out of here.
Yeah.
We're lucky to get them.
My last couple of things on the on the capital improvements plan, sweeper set aside fund proposing to set aside forty thousand dollars. Um, every year, five thousand from water, five thousand for sewer, ten thousand from electric, twenty thousand from lost. Dump truck, we we would have those funds on hand, we're able to purchase that. Okay, fire hydrant and water water valve repair, continue to uh to fund those. Um, just the one thing that I did not include there, that IT support is is not included in the capital budget.
So the dump truck, is that a new truck now?
That's a, that's a new price.
It is?
Yep. Sure, I'll get used one, they look like what we got.
Well, I know, that's why I think you're better off to buy.
People, people buy them, they keep them forever.
Right. I think we know that you need to start another fund, though, the way it sounds.
It's a lot of, we do a lot of maintenance on them trucks.
Right, that's what I mean, so we, you know, I mean, I think we'd have to start another fund, cause we're probably gonna need one.
Sure.
You know?
Yep.
Let's uh flip to the very first page of the packet if you would. These would would be some of the uh, some of the issues then to uh address. For streets, again, no large street project proposed this year, we proposed fifty thousand from general fund. It's actually the the amount from road use tax is sixty nine five. So you look at about a hundred, uh, hundred twenty thousand dollars to be in the fund potentially by the end of next year. If we have that much again next year, you can have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar project, which would would be a nice sized street project. Get a lot accomplished with that. Having said that, our street fund, um, as of June thirty twenty twenty one is expected to have a negative balance. Estimated to be negative around fifty seven thousand. This is due to that street project, but largely more to do with the caliber settlement. And then the uh the reduced amount of road use tax. So I'm at, I'm asking the council that we, that you would consider transferring some additional funds from a general fund or lost. And there's not, actually not all that much money available in lost. If we would look, about seven thousand maybe from lost and a hundred fifty from from the general fund, we'd look at making that transfer yet this year. Bring the account up to zero and then uh and then look at starting to save funds then profile.
Where does that put our general fund?
It's. Yeah, the estimated uh balance at the end of this year is seven twenty, so it would put us at six seventy.
Thank you.
Sounds like a plan to do it that way.
Okay. Get into these budget requests then, we heard from several groups at the last council meeting. Hometown Pride would propose uh fifteen hundred dollars, again, that's just largely one dollar per capita, a little more for their continued operation. Uh, Lakeview Community Club is at fifteen thousand dollars. Um, that would be the the same contribution that the city made for this current fiscal year. So, um, Spring Lake Golf and Country Club had requested five thousand dollars, your. Questions or comments there?
Is that what it came last year?
Yeah. That's what they gave last year in in Wall Lake Ma- Mashburn, I think, so that gave them some opportunities to update their equipment with some when they were here, so. I don't think that's a bad deal, they do a lot of business with our electrical stuff, so.
Right, plus we use them, we advertise them on the campground thing, so I I think the the same amount we gave last year is is a good idea.
Do we need to put the dump to golf or something?
Okay, um, Region Twelve Housing Trust Fund, uh, they'd requested a thousand dollars again, which, um. We've utilized Region Twelve a lot, I'd like to continue to to do that. And then the Lakeview Housing and Development Authority, interested in your comments here, cause they want to. Be able to be real proactive in um in economic development issues, but it primarily focuses on housing. And this would, um. Their their main initiative right now would be to free up a lot of these uh vacant infill lots. Making those really the most uh cost effective type of of lots that would be available for people to to build new homes on. They'd requested fifty thousand dollars and interested in your thoughts on that, on on the amount. But also how, if you wanna do something like that, how would, what's the process that we would would work through for uh accountability? And then what would the partnership arrangement look like between the city and the and the development authority?
Just gonna have comments.
I've been given this some thought, um, I I'm all in favor of the fifty thousand, I think we need to start on housing and it's a good start. Um, I've been visiting with, um, um, the lumberyard about doing some um partnership with this program, um. I I think the housing committee is talking to other developers and seeing what we can do. Um, you know, the goal there is to get housing affordable for evacu or or lower. You know, not low income people, but within a uh moderate income phase, so. Um, that's the goal here, I think that's what we need in this community and we need to support them. I do think that we shouldn't just hand them fifty thousand and it's their discretion, I think we should, you know, set it aside for them in a fund. And then it it should be set up under council approval in the expenditures, um. But I do think it needs to be readily available to them, so I don't know how you do that, if you have a special council meeting or if that's even a problem, but. Um, I I do think we need to approve what they're gonna do with it and when we're gonna release it to them, based on whatever project it is at that time, so.
I, I, you know, Terry brought this point out a long time ago, that we should develop these vacant lots, you know, and. I think the housing development did a good job in finding these different properties, so. Yeah, I I I kinda agree with you on setting it on in a a fund or account, whatever you wanna say. And then have them come back to us and tell us what what they got going on, this is what we are, then we make a decision on. Do we jump in or stay out or, you know what I'm saying, but I I think if. The developers know that the city's behind this some way, you know, move things along a little bit, you know, again. Do a negotiation on the price, I suppose that would be up to the housing development to 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 work with the seller on that, so. And then come to us and see what we got, I don't know, that's my opinion.
Yeah, come, council makes the ultimate decision.
It uh.
Will by their suggestions.
Who's on the housing development committee?
Hometown Pride.
Oh, no, it's not the Hometown Pride people, it's uh, it's a separate standalone nonprofit, so.
Bob Cleveland.
Bob Cleveland, Brent Brent Muggenbird, Judy Kramer, um, Kelly Bureau.
Eric Wallace.
Eric Wallace, huh?
So, uh, how much of the Kim.
Jackie Wallace.
Yep, Jackie Wallace.
So how many, how much of the fifty thousand can one person get all of it or what?
Well, that's, I guess what I, what I'm hearing now is is just the notion that the 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 council can earmark these funds and and know that it's available for the housing authority. And I think what we wanna do is, I wa- I wanna work with the housing authority to establish a process by which they would be able to access money. Um, because there certainly needs to be, you know, some. Well, just in in knowing that that the funds are are being properly used and um certainly some accountability for how everything goes, you know, we, and you, the city. You just can't give them funds to utilize at their discretion, it would.
Would that money get, that won't be like as a loan type though.
Well, that's, you know, that's another, I think, important question about what your expectations are. Whether whether this is money that would ultimately be used to incentivize uh. A house to be built and it's, and this incentive is paid, basically paid as cash and then and then the incentive is gone. Or is this something where you assist the the housing uh housing authority, say, in the purchase of a land, they turn around, sell the land again. With the notion of continuing to turn over over money as as much as possible to reuse it. I mean, that's, that would seem to be great and maybe the answer is that it's a combination of both.
So I was just gonna say, because like I said, you gotta have an opportunity that you want the contractor that has to make some money on it somehow, some way. And it, I don't know if you. You know, there again, it depends upon this difference, if you have a lot that you spent five, seven thousand dollars or around twenty five, thirty thousand dollars, you know what I'm saying, so. That's all gotta be kinda hammered out as as you can see what what their abilities are, so you'd hope that you could recover part of the cost back, maybe not all of it, but. You know, that was.
Well, that would be the deal though, I think, they're gonna, you know, we we have the, we have this money in this fund for them. They come to us and say, this is the project that we have and this is what it's gonna cost and can we use some of those funds for that? And then it's a council decision.
Yeah, that's, yep.
Yeah.
That's an opportunity.
Sounds good.
Yep, but like I said, we're still involved in it, we're not just.
Just so we don't lose.
We hope we get the best.
Don't lose control of it, you know, that's mainly.
As much as we can for, but see what happens.
Cause imagine you go and buy a lot and end up except that for twenty year old.
Well, I think that.
That's, yeah, that's the idea, not to do.
Right.
You know, they wanna move.
Yeah.
On on page seventeen, this is was mainly something that helped me out to be able to to get these uh items then. Down to the line item in the budget that they would go into, just uh, you know, the quick answer here is that everything that we just discussed on that first page, everything was included in here. So what, what we're hearing about potential changes to the budget deal, more about about camping revenues on on camping fees and then also some changes on wages. Other than that, the uh capital projects, as we proposed, are are all include in there and then all of the funding of the community organizations were in there too. So if you take a look at page twenty. This is kinda show you where we're at on the uh revenues versus expenditures by fund.
Wait, wait, just a minute, I'm trying to catch up here. So, um, I have a little trouble seeing the page numbers, so you're on this, um, the capital projects line items?
Yeah, I'm I'm now the next couple of pages after that, revenues versus expenditures. Do you have any questions on the capital projects?
And that's, that's where you have it all already in there?
Yeah, everything's in there.
Okay, alright, okay.
Revenues versus expenditures and this is by fund. So looking at the top, top of the page there where you see general fund had total projected revenues of one point zero eight eight million and.
Right. Right.
Requested expenditures of one point zero eight two million, so the difference is six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars, so it it has six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars more revenue. Than requested expenditures. So you see.
So you have this CDVG housing rehab at fifty four thousand, is that combining those two things?
That's the, that's the second, that's the last part of that uh housing rehab grant, Vicki, so.
Okay.
That's just us paying out the last half of that grant and receiving that those grant funds instead.
Okay, so we receive them and then they go out, right?
Yes, yep.
So we actually get the, I mean, I I know this, but I guess I just wanna vocalize it, we we get the money from the grants and then we pay it to Region Twelve, right?
Correct, yep, yep, that's how it goes.
Okay, I'm just trying to look at all the line items like.
Sure.
How much did they, Region Twelve put into the community this year, with all those four homes, remember? Hundred and seven thousand?
It's a hundred and sixty three thousand out of grant and it's say it's about half done, so. This is.
So.
Okay.
So where do you have this fifty thousand that you've budgeted for the housing, I guess I'm not seeing it.
That's the.
It's not an expenditure, but.
It's an expenditure, but it's also a revenue, it's it's offset.
No, I'm talking about the fifty thousand that we just.